One moment, folks.
Good evening, Zach.
Maybe.
Yeah.
P mute.
Hello? I'd say so is actually the audio.
Our instructor.
I kind of thought.
It's not an audio.
This one?
Yeah.
He left.
I don't think he wanted to hear that.
Uh.
Like, where the arrow with the headphones?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Now we should hear us.
Can you hear us now, Zach?
Yeah, now I can.
Okay.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. Want to welcome our visitors, members, to the September seventeen twenty twenty-five Grayville Town Council meeting. Call the meeting to order at this time, and we will look at reviewing the minutes of our September third council meeting. The council members have any additions or corrections?
Nope, I agree to review them as well. I would make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes as recorded.
I'll try and do it. So carry. Are you re- um, representing the planning commission?
I am.
John.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't just say maybe.
That's okay, good evening. I'm Laura Overholzer with the Department of Planning Services. Um, thanks for having me back. Um, it was a beautiful drive out to Grayville this evening, so thank you.
Right.
Good excuse to come out here. Um, so this proposed technical amendment for the Grayville zoning ordinance is an accumulation of the twenty twenty-four Fort Wayne and Allen County, um, technical amendments, the twenty twenty-four Fort Wayne and Allen County height amendments, and then the twenty twenty-four Allen County accessory dwelling unit amendment, all which have been previously approved. Um, it also clarifies some language and addresses any issues that have come up um, since our last update, which was just the beginning of the year for Grayville. Um, and then, of course, it aligns the Grayville ordinance, um, with the already updated Allen County and, um, Fort Wayne ordinances. Um, so we held a public hearing for this in August, and the, um, Allen County Plan Commission recommended a due pass. Um, so with hopefully your approval then this evening of this, then we can move forward with getting everything, um, ready to go and updated, um, for November seventh, which is when these changes would be effective. Um, if you have any questions, um, happy to try and answer those. Um, otherwise, I, I brought a couple copies of the resolution. I don't know who, do you also?
The E check.
Oh, you do, okay. Um, and, um, yeah, any question?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I don't think so.
Don't think there was any question.
Okay, excellent.
Went through it.
Okay, very good. Um, I'll have you, um, I'll have you sign a copy for me as well, if that's okay, that I can take back with me, um, this evening. I did not fill in the resolution number, um.
We have a resolution.
Twenty twenty-five dash eight.
Okay, okay. Um, yeah.
I'll need a motion to accept this resolution.
Yeah.
I was like, thank you.
If you do all three correct. Twenty twenty-five.
Yes, correct.
Twenty-five dash eight.
Dash eight, okay.
Eight.
Eight, twenty twenty-five dash eight. That being said, uh, wait till we finish there, and then I will read this resolution in for adoption. And discussion. Okay, I will make a motion that we, uh, first of all, I guess I have to read in Grayville Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eight by title. It is a resolution to the amendment chapter one fifty-four of the Town of Grayville, State of Indiana ordinance. Do I have a motion to accept the first reading?
I make a motion to accept the first reading of Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eight.
Second.
Carry.
Okay, um, second reading of Grayville Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eight, resolution to the amendment of chapter one fifty-four of the Town of Grayville, State of Indiana ordinance, of a motion for the second reading.
Make a motion to accept the second reading of Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eight.
Any comments?
I was gonna say, could you second, second that? I'll second it. Okay, um, I would open the floor after the second reading prior to adoption. If there are any public comments or discussion, if not, then I will move to the third and final reading for adoption by title. It's Grayville Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eight, resolution to amendment of chapter one fifty-four of the Town of Grayville, State of Indiana ordinance. Do I have a motion for a third and final adoption reading?
Make a motion to accept the third and final reading of Resolutions number twenty twenty-five dash eight.
I'll second that.
Carry.
All right.
Thank you. Yeah. You just need one copy.
Yes, thank you.
That's her, her copy.
Oh. These are ours.
What is the date on this stuff?
Um.
What did, just today's date?
Yeah.
I put together the line with today's date, which I think is the eighteen.
It was the seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Okay, and I don't think.
Don't take that until tomorrow.
We got them all corrected?
We can always give you one.
Sure.
We can always give you one more.
Thank you, Laura.
Uh, thank you so much.
Thanks. Allen County Planning?
I still, I, Dave, what's my?
Yeah, he's coming in on.
Is he? Okay, I was gonna say, can you even call him and just send me a message?
And then Stephanie, can you allow me to share my screen? I'm gonna put on the screen, uh, something that Dave will be talking about during his presentation, unless, Dave, you need to, um, share your screen first. Hey, Dave, you're, you're.
Yes, sorry, sorry. Um, yep, I don't think, if you can share it, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, yep.
Can you guys see me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Fantastic.
You're up.
All right, um, fantastic. So, um, as I said in my email, uh, the Department of Planning Services is working on updating the comprehensive plan maps for all of Allen County, and that includes, uh, the Town of Grayville. So, um, we committed to updating the comprehensive maps every two to three years. And, you know, uh, it's been about two or three years now, so here we are. And, um, if you can see the map on your screen, um, it should have a red rectangle around a parcel on, I believe, State Street there in Grayville. And that was rezoned in twenty twenty-three from industrial to low intensity residential. And that was for a single-family house. So, the future land use map actually had this area deemed as production center for industrial because it was zoned industrial. So, what DPS is proposing is to change it from production center industrial to low intensity, uh, rural residential, much like what is, um, it was rezoned to. And there's also a lot of low intensity residential houses along State Street right there, even to the east, uh, along Grayville Road and Roth Road. You see a lot of single-family houses that will most likely continue to be single-family houses in the next fifteen to twenty years. So, um, DPS is proposing to basically right-size the future land use map and kind of align with, uh, the development trend to have rural residential, uh, single-family in this area. And I was just wanting to see if you agreed or you didn't agree, or if you had any thoughts about the idea.
See any difficulty with that? Makes sense.
Hey.
And Saunders is aware of it?
Who, who owns that property?
Um, Souter Realty?
Yeah.
Souter Realty, okay.
They, they seem to own a lot of the, um, a lot of the property there on the eastern Grayville area.
I, I'd say, I'd say we need to check with, uh, Souter Feeds.
Yeah.
Uh, cause I mean, that land locks them if we do that. If we go to residential on that.
Well, it would just be along the road. Um, I'm not planning to make any industrial, these zoned properties, um, rural residential. Um, if you would like me to reach out, there is that L property that kind of goes around. It has frontage on, um, State Street and Roth Road. It goes around that, um, that house on the corner there. Um, if you want me to check with, with Souter Feeds on that one?
Yeah, I think that would, because that concerns me a little bit, because they're, they keep expanding all the time. And they're gonna get landlocked if we, if we would do that.
Um, I, I, I don't think they are landlocked currently. Um, like I said, they.
But I.
What was that?
Guess I would rather you check with them first.
Okay, yeah, we'll reach out to, to Souter Feeds. Okay, all right. That sounds like a plan. I'll reach out to, to Souter Feeds. And, um, you guys have a contact information or a contact person that you would recommend me reaching out to?
Jerry.
Jerry?
Jerry, yeah. Jerry Souter.
Okay, fantastic.
Do we have, do we have a number for him that we could give, Dave? Or should he just call Souter Feeds and ask for Jerry Souter?
I think Jerry Souter.
Two six oh, six two seven, two one nine six. That's their, please, they'll get, they'll get you in touch with them.
I'll, I'll email that to you, Dave, if you didn't get that.
Thank you, Zach. Yeah, I did not. All right. Um, yeah, I, I really appreciate the feedback, everyone. And, um, that was the only real major change that I would propose. Everything else with the future land use map around Grayville looks to be right in line with, um, everything that's, that's happening in this, in the, the town right now. So, um, I will, yeah, I, I will reach out to Souter Feeds, and I'll probably send you an email to confirm what, uh, I, I hear back from them. And we'll move the process along for the, the map change, okay?
Yeah, sounds good, good.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, fantastic. Um, just FYI, it will probably be back to you for a final vote, um, sometime early in twenty twenty-six, okay?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night. Thank you. All right, bye.
Thank you. Bye.
John Mark.
So just in case, John Mark, you have a resident of Harlem, Springfield, and stuff. And so, on the agenda, if anybody's looked at it, and I'm sure people have seen in Facebook and the Courier, all of the, uh, discussions and comments or whatever in regards to the fire territory and Cedar Creek Township. All I'm wanting to do is have an open discussion in regards to, uh, the disbursement of funds um, and/or possibly the lack of total funds. It, it's, it's a gray area right now. And I, and I should have brought copies. I believe Grayville, Grayville received a check of, uh, right around this over eighty-five thousand dollars as far as their portion of, of the, the territory funds. And the question is, is based on the numbers, is that the correct amount? We don't know. And so, it, it becomes very complicated, unfortunately. And one of the things that a variety of people we discussed and what have you, and, and so just in general terms, and I don't know how much discussion you guys have had about it, so using Cedar Creek Township's numbers, beginning in twenty twenty-four, when the territory ended at the end of twenty twenty-three and the district started, the funds were somewhere in the vicinity of around three point two to three point million dollar, three, three point three million dollars. Obviously, we've got expenses that had to be paid out. We'll set that aside because there's some, there's some questions as far as some invoices. Um, maybe they're legit, I don't know. That, and that's one of the many questions. And, and so the difference between what was paid out in twenty twenty-five, based on what was left, except for they are holding another two hundred thousand dollars for something miscellaneous expenses for some reason.
Incoming fines, possibly.
Supposedly. So, the differ, the difference is, is somewhere in the vicinity of one point two million dollars. Now, the question that I have, which it becomes a little difficult trying to get information on a regular basis from Cedar Creek Township. That's my opinion. Maybe other people are successful at getting other information pretty, pretty easily. I don't know. Um, but I wanted to have an open discussion to get the board's opinion on, on what they think is, is the possible amount that it should be. Is it, is this final minus the two hundred thousand that would be dispersed at some point in time? Just trying to get an understanding because it, it is a, it's a mess. And unfortunately.
I, excuse me, I think we need to check with Baker Tilly. They were instrumental in getting the tax amounts for us and stuff like that, uh, when that was set up. I, I sat on that board at that time.
It's set on the board of?
Fire Territory.
Territory, okay.
Yeah. And Baker Tilly worked with us, uh, and what's called his husband, Steve.
Mm-hmm.
And they had set up the, that's where we could probably check and see what the amounts are supposed to be, I, I would say.
Okay.
What was her name? Zach, do you remember what, who the gal was from Baker Tilly?
Um, I can, I don't remember her name, but I can look that up. Um, and I'll do that now. But, but I think that's, I think that's a good idea, Wilmer. I think Baker Tilly, if any outside professional would, would be in a position to determine out, or allocating, um, proceeds out, Baker Tilly would be a great starting point.
Yeah, I think so. Cause they, they're the ones that set, set the rate, you know, for all the townships and stuff at that time, so that'd be a good place to.
Well, a, as a, as a board, I guess that, is that something that you may choose to pursue, to find out those answers?
Well.
I don't know whether the board has chosen to reach out to any of the other entities to find out. I know at the Springfield Township, um, meeting yesterday, there was not an update. I know that they have proceeded forward with, with, uh, legal counsel. I don't know the status of where that is at, um, to understand the details of, we're starting with, you know, part A or step A, step one with X amount of dollars, and, and how do we get to where we're at today? While there's, Gateway provides a lot of information, the issue is, is within Gateway, there are questions. And, and that's where I think it would serve well to, the Town of Grayville, but also everybody else, as far as the public, where is, where's the difference and, and what, what is the difference and how do you get to that final number?
Right.
And that's the downside to this whole mess. I'm a little surprised that it's taken this long, personally.
I know, yeah.
I don't understand it. I'm sure that there's, there's stuff going on behind the scenes, but it just seems like past bills eighteen months later.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
I, I don't, I don't get it. I, I know that there is, and I've heard it myself, I'll speak what has been told to me from Cedar Creek Township. There seems to be a lot of blame going in a variety of directions. I, the blame is easy.
Yeah.
Cause Steve's not here.
Well, I can tell.
And, and that's sad, because that's an easy, that's an, that's a scapegoat, and that's, that's wrong. And I know Steve personally. That's a, that's a real hard pill for me to swallow.
When he left office, everything was in order.
That's right, exactly.
And they can blame him all they want, but.
And so, when you hear that they received a box of bills and just dropped in her lap, I don't, I don't know, I didn't see it.
I don't lose that, right.
We're, we're, we're at two different ends of the spectrum. How can we get together and stuff like that? Um, I, I, the meeting last night in Springfield Township was rather heated, um, because of what's been, been published over the last two weeks or so.
And, and I hate to spend this money that they give us, because I have no idea if that goes to us or who it goes to. But we borrowed seven hundred fifty thousand to make payroll.
Correct.
Now, that money should go someplace to cover that seven hundred fifty thousand.
There's a lot of steps that would be questionable along the way. It is what it is. So anyhow, that's why I wanted to have the discussion, to hear the, 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 the board, or at least place that question to the board, to consider what else, what are we gonna do? How do we get together? How do we move forward to, to getting this thing finalized? And, um, what have you, so, that's all I have.
Wilmer, Wilmer, the, the Baker Tilly contact, Wilmer, was Paige Sansone. Her name was Paige. Does that sound familiar, Wilmer, Wilmer?
Yeah.
Paige, yeah.
Yep, that's it.
Yeah.
So, how much money are you saying is outstanding that's not accounted for right now?
Well, the discrepancy in general terms, based on their numbers, is somewhere in the vicinity of one point two million-ish dollars in there. Now, is that all itemized within Gateway? Maybe, I don't know. One point two, one point three million, somewhere in that window.
And that's based on whose calculations?
Well, that's based on, on what was paid out in twenty twenty-five. And what, the beginning balance of January one in twenty twenty-four with the funds. And when you put those two together, there's a discrepancy.
And we have all, all the bills.
Oh, no question. I shouldn't say discrepancy, it's a question. Well, within Gateway, I don't know if you guys have looked at Gateway, but there are significant, there, I have twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four printed out as far as the township, different funds and different things. But there are, there are questions, as a prime example. And maybe it's legit, but in twenty twenty-three dispersment, that, I don't have it broke down by months, but in twenty twenty-three, item or account number sixteen sixty-seven, Cedar Creek Payroll, one point five million dollars. Now, maybe it's something different, but what is Cedar Creek Payroll for one point five million dollars? I, I don't know. Okay? Um, has everybody seen the, the, the discussions that has gone on within Facebook and/or the Courier? Okay?
Yeah, I, for the record, would say, I, I think that's sad, that that's being handled like that. I really do. I think that's.
I, I agree. And, and the transparency is where we're, we're really starting, at least my opinion. I'm struggling with trying to understand the transparency of getting information, or at least alluding to what's going on itself. And that's, that's what's frustrating about the whole thing. But when you look at twenty twenty-four, you know, I've got, in twenty twenty-three, I have asked, I've requested as of last week, um, a number of in, invoices associated with a variety of different accounts. But in twenty twenty-four, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different account numbers that I'm asking for some invoices, just to say, what is it? But why would a fire territory pay host my sip? Twelve hundred bucks, I forget what it is. But why would, why would a, a fire territory be paying a bill or something along those lines to host my sip? I don't know. What is it, alcohol? I don't know what it is. Okay? Now, I haven't talked with the territory slash the, um, board, and I think that's partially where some of the discrepancies come into play. I, I've heard prior to Steve's passing as, as the trustee, there was a discussion between Steve paying bills and what should be paid for and stuff like that. I don't know whether that continued or not. My, my guess is, I don't think it did, but I, I don't know. But there's a number of other, another, a number of other transactions, and this is the one that just last night. So, item sixteen seventy-one, Dewitt Consulting LLC, was switched to Lori Dewitt for fifty-six, fifty-seven thousand dollars. They claim it was a, a clerical error on an intern. I, I don't know that answer, but it just, it just doesn't look good. And, and it can be very all legit and, and clerical errors, but when do we get the, the full detail of what's going on? And that's really what I'm asking as far as the, the council to, to consider, to look at, review, discuss.
Audit.
To, to audit. I know State Board of Accounts has shown up. We were there about a month, month or so ago.
We need to investigate it.
So.
Because the, the thing is, the reports that we got was so small, you couldn't take a mic and a thing and glass and figure out what it was. The print was that small. And we told her, she said, well, that's the way it's been set up. I said, we never had a report from Steve when he was in office from a report like that. That went on for months. We couldn't okay for budget. For bills.
So, I'm gonna, I guess I, I put the question as far as the council, to reach out to the other, other entities, to see what, what do we want to do collectively? Because there, there's, it's just not one entity that's, that's being impacted. It's the different entities and plus us, uh, us community members. That's all I have.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to check the page and, yeah, get, get, get the amounts and tax dollars that went to each entity.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, John. Ordinance violation?
That's entitled to you.
Yeah. Ordinance violation.
Got me out of order, how I edit this stuff. Earlier this week, um, with the Assistant to Sheriff Peters, I had sent out two ordinance violations, um, one of which just notifying of an ordinance violation, the second being a hand-delivered ordinance violation, um, after attempted delivery back, um, on August twentieth um, for the residence of one, three, four, two, eight First Street. Um, within the August twentieth ordinance violation, um, we filed it under public nuisance, which was discussed at the August twentieth council meeting, um, for the broken-down vehicle mower and vegetation and growth, um, on the property. And it was not corrected within ten days of receiving the letter, because the letter was never picked up at the PO box. it was not corrected within ten days of receiving the letter, because the letter was never picked up at the P O box. Um, so in turn, it ended up getting bounced back to me, and at that point, I sent out Sheriff Peters to deliver it. Um, in addition to that, I had a couple residents, um, bring to my attention that there is a colony of cats at the residence that is, um, has shown aggressive behavior, attacking household pets, urinating and defecating on neighboring properties, homes, furniture, et cetera. So I sent a notice of the twenty twenty five dash one ordinance, um, regulating the safekeeping and control of dogs and cats within the town um, in regards to the public nuisance of cats, aggressive or vicious cats or cats at large. And Mr. Jesse Rediger is present this evening, um, and asking for clarification as to why he received the ordinance violations and what can be done on his behalf to correct them.
Can I just eat? The pack. So. First of all, I have ordered a cat enclosure for my animals. I will be contacting the community society to remove all of the cats except the five that I'm keeping. Two of the other cats will be inside, cause they are emotional support animals. And so that is my plan. Um, the yard has been trimmed. As for the vehicle, it still runs. It is a backup vehicle for if my van would ever break down. Yes, there is a flat tire. I will take care of that. Um, the mower, I need to put a belt on. I've just been busy at work. Um, I will move that so it is not out by the road anymore. Um, it was out there in case I needed to have it tiptoed to, um, Shire Matfields to have them proceed on putting a new belt on. So I don't know if there's anything else you would require of me. I can come to the next town council meeting with, uh, pictures of the enclosure once I have it built and put up. And, um, I mean, I can, I'll get the vehicle moved. I'll turn it around, so that way you know it's not a broken-down vehicle.
Do you have plates on it?
Um, the plates are not good, because I had never transferred over the title from.
Hey, you've got thirty days to get plates on it. And if the plates are not on it, we won't tow it.
Okay.
That's, that's the way we've had it since.
Yeah, yeah.
Does our ordinance have a stipulation of how many cats or dogs, you know?
In Allen County, it is, uh, five, um, I know it's five indoor cats.
I would assume if you're keeping them caged, though.
Yeah.
That would be considered
Okay.
as, I don't think you could have five inside and five outside.
No, I'm not. I'm gonna only have my two emotional support cats inside, and then the other five will be outside, and the main society will be coming and picking up birds.
So that becomes seven.
So you're considering those caged ones being?
If you're, I believe, and I, and I could be wrong.
Because that's considered an outdoor. I, I talked to Janet.
But it's an enclosure.
I talked to Janet.
And Janet is?
Works O'Connor, who actually is over there at the Leo. And
We're in Grayville.
I know. And we were talking about it, and she, we were talking about the ordinance today, and she told me that, um, she, she referred to that as being considered outside, because they are outside, they're just in an enclosure.
But you could put a hundred cats in an enclosure and say it's okay.
Well, I mean, but that, I couldn't.
You know, you know what I'm saying?
I do, but it's, it's, you know, five indoor, so I'm not putting five indoor. I'm just having them, they're gonna be still outside, they're just gonna be in an enclosure, so they do not disrupt my neighbors.
Does the ordinance spell out indoor?
It does not.
So it's saying cats or animals?
It, it does not, it does not give a number in your guys' ordinance. Um, all it says is yeah, there's no amount for, on your guys' ordinance that you put into effect earlier this year. It just said, the only thing is, if someone feeds them for more than three days consecutive, they are considered the owners. Actually, regarding over here, I saw four cats that were not my cats, and they're running the streets. Um, and then as opposed to the broken-down vehicle, the house that, uh, sits by me, uh, Vicky Clifton's old house, so actually it's what, two houses down from you, Patty? The, the one that the Hispanics live in? They have had a vehicle on blocks for at least all summer long. And so that's why I kinda called her today and questioned about, you know, this whole thing, because.
Turn it in.
Okay.
But, the yard's a moat?
Yard is moat. It is moat. I will be weed whacking it as soon as I leave here tonight. There's, there's a part in front of my house where I've actually been trying to expand my flower bed.
Well, just, just knock it on down and start over. You can't tell what's what.
Yeah, I have to weed whack that. I can run a mower over it, so that's why I have to, that's what I'm.
It's been a mess all summer.
I know.
And we're, because it, it's this. It downgrades the person next door's house.
Okay.
And, and we've been working to get things cleaned up around town, and we're gonna work hard to do it.
Yep. I know you guys just put that through street in, and all of our road off. Have you guys addressed the flooding issue as well?
There's no flooding there.
Not anymore? Okay.
No.
You guys?
I, I went down there after a good rain.
Okay. Because I, I have pictures of when we got our first, after they did it, the first rain.
That's for, that's for the, at Old Battle.
Okay, it, it had flooded my, my, my driveway, so, I mean, if it floods again, I will just bring it to your attention. And we can, yeah.
We're keeping an eye on it.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. So, um.
And then what about the trash around the house?
Uh, that is getting picked up as well.
Yeah, but that's, that's, that's uncalled for.
Yep, that'll be, that'll all be.
Cleaned up every week.
That'll all be taken here.
Yep.
Yep, that is what I've been working on.
Within the next
week. Does that work, does that work for you?
Seven to ten days, Matt.
Seven to ten days, okay.
Yeah.
I will have a tank here.
Okay.
Okay. Are you satisfied with? And then, um, I will get pictures of that and of the enclosure once I have it up.
And we'll do the research on the number and what's considered
Indoor and outdoor?
Indoor and outdoor.
I will, I will look as well.
Versus if we need to make the adjustment on our, and we'll make the adjustment to animals, period. Whether that's how it's written, thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep. And then I'm gonna hand this to you. I just don't know if there's been any new ordinance or anything. Can you just, uh, mail me in minutes if you have them?
Okay, it's, it's probably gonna take at least a ten day.
That's fine, that is fine. I just, I, yeah, cause I even know this ordinance went into effect. Um, and if I would've known that, I would've dealt with it. Yes, I am, I am extremely sorry that came to this. But I will, I will take care of it. The main society will be coming and picking those up. Um, I'm calling them tomorrow, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Clean up and make it look good.
I will.
Thank you.
That's right. Um, Jesse, don't leave.
I'm not leaving yet.
Karen Herman, I live at thirteen, four, twenty one First Street. Jesse has been burning again, and like last night at midnight, there's this huge fire in his front yard, and the smoke is coming to my house and Patty's house. And I thought we had a burn ordinance, especially in the front yard. That's all.
I, I was just getting rid of the, I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, I didn't know, Karen. Um, I, that's, I did it late at night, cause it was, and it wasn't even, I didn't even see it was that big. I mean, it was.
Well, I could see it from my house.
We do have a burn ordinance.
I know. Okay.
D L Z?
All right, so, item one, uh, waterworks improvements. Um, let's see, so we've been working on getting that lagoon closure finalized. Um, I guess we would ask for a motion to, uh, proceed with getting a level four Q C report from Element Material, or, sorry, Element Technologies Technology. Um, so apparently we're gonna draft this report. Um, so then we get that closed out, and then, so that would cost four hundred and twenty dollars. And, um, we believe it'd be covered under the S R F funds, uh, available there.
That has to do with what might be left over from the in the lagoon, in the lagoon?
Correct.
Thank you.
Is that what the state's requiring?
Yeah, so that's what, uh.
I think you're requiring a level four report.
Yeah.
That wasn't unflinging to have done.
Um, I don't know.
I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, I'll, uh, I don't believe so.
But needs done one way or another, that would get it off the list.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Please. Please. I don't like seeing that every week. Two weeks.
So, but yeah, I just wanna make sure that you guys are okay with that, moving forward on getting that report done.
Good.
And it's all done, leveled, closed out. Does that ground become unbuildable? Could you ever build back over that side or do any kind of improvement like that? A structure and be able to get that? Or has that become dead ground? I'm, is, I'm not, there's no plans.
I, I don't, I don't have a.
This is just for my own information, does that become a dead lot? If we didn't wanna put a storage building up there, could we?
To my, I mean, me just assuming all this stuff was taken out and ground dirt was put back in. So they would be eligible, but I don't know. I don't know for a fact of that, I'm just.
Cause I didn't know if this paper we're paying for, if it's four hundred and twenty bucks.
We, we have to have it for item, for clean closure to be done with the whole project, so.
Okay, I'm just curious what that does to that ground. Kills it or? Be a nice place to have a good, a good storage building, right near the other one.
You're promising stuff.
I'm not.
You're promising stuff.
Okay.
Uh, yep, so the water tower then, um, the rehab works complete, I'm still pending a change order, and coordinating with the contractor. And then, uh, we got you guys the final water tower report. Um, again, just a second over there. Contingency funds left over, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars, forty-three cents. Um.
Can you check and see what kind of equipment and so on is available on the rest to use for some of that fund?
Yeah, we can check on that.
I can think of a few goodies that would be good.
Yeah, me too.
That would be helpful for. Here.
Okay. All right.
All right, yeah, so I guess that's pending, I guess we were already looking at, um, the options that we could do with the community, see what's there, so continue to look at that. It's on the trail.
Do you need a motion for that four hundred and twenty dollars?
Uh, yeah, I think you guys have already said to go ahead with it, but if you wanna make a motion.
I'd make a motion then to proceed with that, uh, level four, the Q C report from Element Technologies for a total of four hundred and twenty dollars. Do you have a second?
I have a second. Motion, Carrie.
Thank you.
Yep, so the trail, um, obviously that was completed before the fair, um, we've been letting you guys know, we're trying to get a final walkthrough, it's gonna be after the fair. Um, the county said that they were available next week. Um, I don't know what your guys' availability would be.
You got a date, kind?
Yeah, uh, just a couple of options, uh, that we can get to the county. Um, cause basically they said they were free all week. Um, they did tell me that like a week and a half ago, so hopefully nothing filled there.
I could do, I could do a Thursday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I'm gone. Are you available on Thursday?
Yeah, Thursday. Next Thursday.
Pick a time on Thursday, I'm open, whatever you guys can get.
Yeah, Thursday, Thursday's a good day.
I'm blocked out, so.
Maybe we could do like two thirty or three?
Three?
Three.
Three o'clock Thursday? Where do you wanna meet?
Um, let's say the park, and we'll work our way up.
Okay. So one person parked at the park and everybody else? Parked by the liquor store, and then we can just drive back?
I'm wanting a boat car and boy down the street.
Got your, got your sticker on.
Yes, he does. Yes, he does. Finally. Finally. Um, I wanna touch base on the trail itself. Uh, I had a couple residents along the trail, mainly on State Street, call in, um. Is there any way that we can put no, like, no equestrian signs on the trail itself? Because I've had several residents have to clean defecation off of their driveways, uh, because
Horses.
horse and buggies and.
If I can make a comment on that, we are gonna see a higher number of people riding horses around Grayville. There's a movement in the Almond community to increase that. Um, guys selling riding horses and buggy horses are, are trying to push the riding aspect as well. So maybe worth.
Investing across the board.
Maybe.
Yes.
On our sidewalks.
Sidewalks, trails, or concrete pedestrian walkways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I just know that specifically right, within that stretch there, uh.
They're, but they're back on the wetlands too.
Yeah.
That's all beat up, and there's horse manure back there.
Even though there's no more signs at the entrance to the park.
I think we need, uh, upgrade the amount of signs, and again, we'd have to probably, they should be between Leo and Grayville. But that would need to be county, we'd have to have county approval to put those signs up. Where the, where Paige Road comes out, yes.
I think it's already had no horse, horse on there.
Right.
It like starts right there on Page, I think, and then.
Yeah, I'm just saying the, the county section already has those.
Yeah. But I think there should be, it says no or fines. I, we need to have something that's a little bit stiffer. And we need to have a
Something that he can enforce.
Golf carts, pony carts.
It's a horse.
Yeah.
No more.
We'll draw something up. And we'll need to get them in town. I know, but if we put some all you gotta do is find two or three of them. And it's gotta hurt.
Are you, are you gonna do that, Mr. Peter?
I'll do a ride, I'll do a ride along day with you. You can do that.
Wait, I'm enforcing.
On a horse or a car?
I'm horse.
Good choice of words.
I'm taking a horse in the shovel with you too.
Okay, back to the uh, walkthrough, you're talking about the twenty-fifth? At Thursday?
Yep.
At three P M?
Three P M. Yep, medium park.
Medium park.
Perfect.
And then, uh, at that time, we'll talk with, uh, contractor should be there, and we'll discuss the curb painting and the ballards there by the gas station.
Have we got pricing on that or anything yet?
No, um, we were trying to get from them to see if we could incorporate it in the project yet, or what we could do with that. Um, then obviously we're still working on that north section, north of town. Anything else on the trail, from anybody?
I just had a curiosity question. Was there anything in the budget for benches along the trail?
Uh, no.
Do we have anything left over that we can put a bench or two in?
We will check with the county, because it was administered by the county, so I'm not sure what.
It's like the stretch between Leo and Grayville, there's a couple benches along there. I, whether people enjoying, you know, taking a break. And now if it did, come up or not, so.
Are you saying, pretty much some are happening?
You're gonna have to have some benches every two hundred feet.
If you're gonna put benches there, you're gonna have to put trash cans there.
Yeah.
Cause people are gonna sit down and drink and throw their cans anywhere. I'm just saying, then someone's gonna have to be responsible outside of Grayville and Leo, collecting all that. And I love that trail. I run it every other day. I love that strip between there, and there's enough cans and trash as it is.
Oh, yeah.
But if you give somebody somewhere to sit, the kids are gonna sit there and hang out there when it's dark. And with the Amish field right there, they're gonna be just throwing stuff over the fence.
My, my wife grew up on Page, just far enough from the liquor store that they cleaned up.
Little samples, a little by the side, I got to them.
I can walk the field by it.
Yep. It would be beautiful. I, I, I hate to play devil's advocate, but we're gonna be asking Eric to pick those cans up, and he's not gonna like it. Yep, it would be beautiful, I, I, I hate to play devil's advocate, but we're gonna be asking Eric to pick those cans up, he's not gonna like it.
We're gonna ask, he's gonna be like.
See what I mean?
I, I know it would be enjoyable, it'd be, you know, additional fun, but we have such a lot there, I know it'd be wonderful to pick all this, so.
Oh, I think they'd love it. Maybe the county would love to do that.
I'd say maybe we could put that instead of allers.
Oh, no.
No.
I don't care about that, I know what my concrete and checkered sidewalks broke out.
Don't want people parking in front of the end station.
Alright, trail speak.
Um, so then, uh, Harper Projects, um, they had a pre-construction meeting with ADI, um, they're working on that Gravel Road sewer extension. And then, uh, the Page Road sewer extension as well. Uh, we had a couple questions coming up, so we'll, uh, address those. And, uh, keep that moving forward.
On the, on the Page Road one?
Yeah.
I, I, just a heads up, Loner may, may get involved with, with Montingher, who owns a couple of those fields out there.
Yeah, he had.
Next to, next to the school. Um, he's wanting some taps, but they're not, they're not included in this, this package here. But that's what, they're gonna send somebody out tomorrow, hopefully talk with Rudy who do the board job out there, but we may need to get ahold of him.
Is the school in it?
The school's in, that's where it stops at, but the field just in the north, he wanted a larger tap, and then apparently there's a house or two houses, and there's another field.
Yeah, I didn't know what he was talking about.
And they wanted that one too, but those are not in here. And the question comes in, is it something they plan on doing five years from now, or are they planning on doing them, you know, next year? Cause if they're doing it next year, then maybe by all means do it now, but if it's five years from now, they can do it later. That's where the question was coming in, and it wasn't like one home, it was like five homes in each of those areas, so.
Yeah, it's a multi, you know, that.
Correct, and that's.
Yeah, we gotta find that out.
Yeah, we may need to get ahold of him and find out what he's wanting for sure, but they are not in this big package that we've set out, but it'd be cheaper now than it will be down the road, but we also wanna extend that one down, so the more we use other stuff, less that extension can go, so. But that's all, I, just so you're aware, we, they may have to holler you to holler to get ahold of him, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, yeah.
And then, uh, lighting project, it will be getting started after the cruisin'. And, uh, the load station's anticip- anticipated to start later this month. Um, then twenty twenty-four streets. That's all, um, Stephanie got the documents sent to NDOT, and then they were going to voice, or had voiced, um, for sure.
Yeah, that's, that's been sent out.
Okay, sweet.
Um,
Good.
They didn't check tracking on it today, but it did say it was delayed yesterday, so. I, I have, I sent it certified, so I'll, I'll know when they receive it. The repayment for NDOT.
Okay.
So we can probably take that off the list.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Which one's that, is that for West Street and Illinois Street?
Yes.
So are we gonna do a final walkthrough on the grass and sod that's never been replaced yet?
Uh, yeah, we can do that.
We've been discussing the last two or three meetings, that's the only reason I'm asking.
You got some cement proofings and stuff.
Yeah.
Do you guys wanna schedule? Now, or? Um.
And that's with Brooks?
Yes.
Will Davio be around next Thursday?
I'm not sure.
Or do you need to check with them and get some availability, why don't you check with them and get some availability from them?
Okay.
I would think they would wanna make that as quick as possible since they're asking for their money.
Yeah.
I think that it's a good incentive for them to pick some quick dates. Anything but Wednesdays, Wednesday is I'm out of state every week, and I need to be on that walkthrough.
Yeah.
I assume probably like late afternoons, the last.
Yeah, Tuesday better. Or early morning.
That works, yep, so we'll, uh, reach out and take that setup.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
No.
Um, so then twenty twenty-five streets, that's first street out here. Um, if you didn't see, they've got the stone down, curves installed, um, and then they're starting prepping for the sidewalk and driveways. Um, and then Jeff pointed out some areas that was cracked up and, um, so we'll reach that subject with Brooks as well and, and see what we can do on the late, the earlier portions.
This portion's just got done by this drain on the intersection of here and West Street, a hole this big around, right in front of the drain, you can stick your hand down it and stick your hand into the drain. They go putting asphalt over that, the asphalt's gonna go right on through, they couldn't concrete over it, it's too big. I'll show you a picture of it.
Show me a picture of it.
Yeah, they're gonna have to put down a plate or something over it, and then put some concrete over it and then asphalt, cause you're gonna have a sunken mess there now.
Should you show it to me?
Yep, I'll get you out for the meeting.
And then, uh, we had to flip to the last page, uh, on this subject. We put it into, um, in front of the fooder going, lay asphalt there, eight foot wide, uh, circle back at gravel
Mm-hmm.
that they've got there, uh, from the roadway, um, are you guys still okay with them doing that, or would you rather go without the asphalt?
We'll take it, yeah.
Okay.
If we're gonna give these some asphalt, we're gonna take it.
Especially for that hole. Yeah, and then, uh, like, on that same picture across the street, um, there's a little five-foot bump out behind the sidewalk in that shaded area, the shaded area, can you see where I'm?
C, number C?
What you talking about where it says existing right away? That existing R W, that little one there, or?
I guess I just. So. This.
Oh, well, uh, further that box here, yep.
On the right side, um, so we had proposed that to include a park bench in the future, uh, the bench wouldn't be C C and G eligible, so we had to put it in the bid, um, I don't know if you guys wanted to keep that, uh, in the project? Or if you'd rather go without it?
How close is that to the corner there?
Of the property line, so it's actually the great, in front of the town hall here.
Oh, okay.
So that, um, there's a power pole next to the driveway to the town hall, so that's just to the right of that. Looking towards the road.
Saying keep it, keep it in there.
Yeah.
We don't have to put a bench in there right now, but.
Right.
Might be nicer on that street there.
Cause I, I think we talked about it before, but I just wanted to make sure before they installed it, and you guys are wondering why is it here?
Yeah. Okay.
Um, so that's all that we had on First Street. Any other concerns? At the moment, from you guys?
Cause, cause we're talking about First Street, I want you guys to be aware, tomorrow A D P is coming in to replace that pole in the corner. There's nothing underneath that pole, I don't know how it's standing up, but
Okay.
I mean, it's ninety percent gonna plug, I think it's much wouldn't.
It's like a toothpick underneath it.
So, I got, we got A D P coming tomorrow, and we don't know what it's gonna knock out, what's gonna be disconnected, we just don't know, it's, it's gonna be worse, so.
Okay. Anything else in Allen?
Um, the water system planning, sounds like the south loop. Uh, we got that worked out with, uh, our country home. And we proceed with what they had plans, uh, the north section, we're gonna get something to the, the owner and contractor uh, later this week, Dan and Casey have everything on that. I guess I'll do that, um, coordination with, uh, city utilities, uh, San Terry. I'm sorry, they started up their meter, almost twenty-seven, uh, and they're still working through the communication.
Everything on our side, you got something on their side, that's right, so.
Hmm, okay.
Our side will play. Um, and so on the C C and G application for twenty twenty-six
Mm-hmm.
streets, um, survey spending on that, and again, still that seven hundred thousand. Uh, to be applied for, the window opens out there first.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we will need a letter of commitment from Claude. Um, like we do every year, second, Gravel is able to put a thirty twenty percent match, I guess I'd ask for a motion to sign that letter outside of a regular meeting, if you guys are okay with that.
And what's that letter for?
Um, just to say that Gravel has the funds to, um, match that twenty percent of the two, uh, seven hundred thousand construction cost.
Do we know that? Are we gonna make a motion pending further review of finances?
Hmm, I already have a budget.
So we're gonna have the money?
Yeah, I think that determination was last weekend, yep, our last meeting.
Yeah.
Well, then I will make a motion then, um, to allow for town council president to sign a letter outside an official meeting to allow for that project to continue through.
I said, that, write the letter.
Come on, think about it. All in favor?
So moved.
Alright. Okay.
And then, um, obviously expected construction next year, and then also another action item, uh, we'd ask for a motion to update the Title Six and ADA transition plan. Um, and then, there will likely be a couple of signature pages, um, just basically noting that the council's aware of what the plan of action is for, uh, the Title Six and the ADA. Um, I guess the motion would be to assign those documents outside of regular session as well.
Alright, I would make a motion then to allow for a signature outside of an official town meeting for the documentation of the Title Six and the ADA forms. Have a motion to accept, um,
Second to that.
All in favor?
Carry. And that's all that we had.
Okay.
Go back to the trail. Um, for you guys, I won't be here, when they have that, wanna have that ribbon cutting?
And I'm gonna be out of town that, leaving that morning.
You are, okay.
When is that?
The chest I get a speech?
Well, it depends when that is.
It's twenty-second.
What's the twenty-second?
October, October twenty-second.
Either that or Kevin wrong.
It's a Wednesday. It's the only day of the week I can't be in town.
Okay.
I'm out of state every Wednesday.
I'm going fishing.
I'll go with you.
You can do, you can do your speech in your fishing hat with a vest on.
Okay, I'll try to get ahold of Kent again, I told him I wouldn't be available, but
Yeah, I was going back and forth there too, and.
Say, nobody. Okay, I'll get ahold of him.
It's the only day.
Okay.
Kevin, Kevin could be a representative of the.
What I was gonna say is, that ribbon cutting is when we all talk to Kent about more signs for the trails as far as.
Or Cat Castle, is he still doing that?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah, he's back in. Okay. Thank you. Did you have something for us? The C?
Yes.
No?
I'm just here.
Please, welcome, thank you.
Did you say hi?
Okay.
Or are you, you asking for public comment at this point?
Right.
Oh. You ready to go?
No, I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
No comment?
I'm just here for the ride.
Uh-huh. Sometimes it's fun.
Sorry, did, are you opening for public comment, uh, just, uh?
Yeah.
Like, we're at the end of the meeting?
No.
Which, exactly?
No, we're not. Ryan, or?
Only, I have, Eric provided some stuff, but, um, it deals with the cross connection at the metered hydrant we had installed at the water tower. Um, that probably should be something we have, the extra contingency funds left over, you probably should have that installed over there. Um, the state says we have to put a check valve on it, or back over there on that, down there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it has come up, someone wants to use it, um, I am in conversation with Iden right now to see if we can get, at least that's, somebody use that, they have a air gap in there, so it technically does qualify, but we've been told at this point, wait. Uh, our inspector, who would normally be using responses fairly quick, is no longer with Iden anymore. So that's why I've gotten the responses, I did get ahold of Lucio, who is the section chief, and he responded back this afternoon to, with another question, so I gave him what I was actually asking for, so hopefully tomorrow I have an answer at some point in time, so, about that. Um, I think one of the local companies wants to fill a tank up more frequently, um,
I've got a graver, graver.
And.
You had a two thousand gallon tank, they wanna.
Yeah.
It takes them, they do a hose in the building, it takes them two days to fill it up. So they set up a tenant, Stephanie, there's a digital readup down there, they can take digital numbers.
Yeah, that's where we wanna use it, but at this point, we're not, we can't use it, I mean, other people are using fire hydrants periodically, but, but with the same style equipped with air gaps, but that one's been days there, we can't use it at the moment, so hopefully they'll get back with us and say, yeah, go ahead and use it for that purpose, I only bought it for that one per, that one purpose, so.
So used it once.
Yeah, that's before we got, yeah, so, so. So, yeah, right now it's in hold, and they've been working with Stephanie on that, trying to figure out what we're going through, and.
And Shannon, Shannon relayed, relayed our messages back and forth to Brock yesterday, so.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, where's the limo at the moment, so you guys are wearing that, but that's something we should have done down there with that extra money, cause we probably should have done it in the first place and just blanked it, so.
Okay.
That's all, I know Eric had a couple of things going on this last couple of weeks, so.
Um, putting in the sewer ports, man, coming, going down Page Road, we come across the old line from Harland, and we took over to send it forward, and what we found, hidden air release valves in the ground. Harland didn't know they were there, I talked to Tony, he has no mapping of it, but as we go down this line, if we find them, we have to dig them out and replace it.
Hmm.
So.
This particular one is, the top is gone for the banhole structure, and it's pulled dirt all the way top. They just happened to find the, literally the top of the air release valve was.
Sticking on the dirt.
That's how they found it, some of them.
It should have its own enclosures, you can put it in there and change it out, work the valve, and right now it's only, they took the top off, so it's all enclosed in dirt, so we're gonna have to dig it out, put a structure on it, put a new air release valve, so we can have access to it.
So that's a usable line?
We use it now.
Yeah.
That's what we send forward.
We burnt that out for Mazeville.
But.
We said it's.
It, it come this way to go to Neil Cedeville.
Mm-hmm.
We purchased it and blew the back out of the way.
Right. But as we go down that road, every hill that we come to, there's probably gonna be one there. So, as we go through this project, we're gonna probably need probably more, we've only found one so far, but that's what I came and told you we had to buy a couple yesterday.
Yeah.
They're fifteen hundred bucks a piece just for the part, that's not capital enclosure or whole wood, that's just the purpose until top, it's fifteen hundred.
Ask Mazeville, tell Mazeville that we bought a solid line. See if they wanna pay for that. I'll get him fired up.
Other than that, on Sunday, we had a South Indian Street lift station. So spent four hours digging that out Sunday. Other than that, we got Clayton, he's been watering the sod down through the streets and picked up, took all the flower baskets down this afternoon. We'll be digging out the planters tomorrow, getting out all the dead flowers and get all that stuff out here. We're gonna leave the bell alone, cause those are. We're gonna leave the bell alone, cause those are a row for a little while longer, but everything else, we're gonna go and take it out, it's on the hand, so.
Okay.
And then, um, do we wanna have a discussion about how do we wanna do flowers next year? Because the lady's already asking.
I. I have a semi-different direction, like, but I have all the information for that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Um, we can dump like that.
Mm-hmm. It, it's part of my, my packet, so.
That's it.
Okay.
Well, I take that back, I take that back. I got prices to do lights on all the vehicles. It's between five and six thousand dollars for both companies. So whether we go to WA Jones, or we go to Pampers Coach, if we go to WA Jones, we could probably get some toolboxes for the trucks also.
WA Jones, WA Jones is in Columbia City.
Yeah.
Versus Pampers Coach being in New Haven.
Yes.
Is that also?
Were they, what about?
Pampers Coach?
New Haven.
New Haven.
They're right off the highway.
Yeah, I have an idea there.
Yeah.
So it's, they're, we owe the guys five to six thousand dollars for both of them, so.
Is that for, that's for both the truck, all four trucks?
All four trucks.
All four trucks, so.
All four trucks, with lights, yep. The truck trucks are gonna have overhead lights from back lights, and then the dump truck's gonna have an overlaid light, and the soul trucks are gonna have an overlaid light. Cause right now they don't have anything, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So you guys okay with that, and I'll just get Pampers Coach and get them done, right?
I would say so, since it's closer, it's on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's getting closer to winter, it's gonna be darker quicker.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
Good. Um. Could you have Clayton do some tree trimming or branch trimming where it's covering up signs? Street signs? Um, there's one at, on State Street, just.
Are we talking the parade route?
No. Well.
If it's the parade route, we usually have Mr. Ellis do that.
We can have trees, you can just trim it on the sign.
This is, this is covering up the, the towns, town, uh.
Hall restroom.
Hall, town hall restroom sign. On State Street.
Okay.
Over street. There might be some other ones where there's some stop signs too.
Have them, have them drive around, look to see if there's any.
Yeah.
Yeah, just drive around, see if there's any being walked, quick, just to trim them up.
Wouldn't take much.
If you turn the road, Mr. Ellis gonna go there.
Hey, we gotta be able to read sign.
I used to do, I used to do the sidewalks. No one's ever said anything, I go around, usually take a Saturday, just to my truck and cut all of my angle of the sidewalks. I haven't killed anything yet.
I've done that back in the walkway.
Yeah.
Um, also, on Indiana Street, you got some breaking up of the asphalt.
Yes, right on the second house coming in.
Is the total patcher ready to go yet?
We'll have her ready, yeah.
Cause that, that's when we got breaking up like that.
That, that's, that's the perfect spot for it.
Perfect.
Yeah, that's a perfect spot for it.
Well, his old concrete crew with the French breaking out too, so probably gonna have to address that one too.
Well.
But the road part, that's, that's a perfect spot for it.
That gets done when we do Indiana Street.
Yeah, it's a bigger, it's a bigger area, it's a perfect spot for it.
I'm just worried about the asphalt right now.
Also, can you, either talk to the fire chief if you want to, but it appears to me like the fire hydrant by the library, um, is turned the wrong way.
Turned the wrong way, need to turn around.
Yeah?
I can turn around quick, it didn't take much to turn it.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I seen it, I seen it during the festival, it was turned, I made a comment, like, oh, that one's not turned yet, so. Just, I can turn it, yeah.
Just reminder. I can't figure out, you know, why you put a face in the.
They all come the same direction, so it's housed in, in the ground, you just gotta. You just gotta turn the top.
Goodness, thank you. Oops. Zach, what do you have for us this evening?
Hey, good evening, I just have, uh, we have our second reading, um, uh, second and third reading of, uh, ordinance twenty twenty five dash six, which is an ordinance establishing stop signs for certain road and street intersections. This was introduced at the last meeting, and there was a modification to Section one B as it relates to the exact placement of the stop sign at the corner of Sawmill and Iker. So this has been revised and I believe distributed, and it's, uh, the revision is accurate, uh, ready for second reading and third reading.
Okay. Let me do it quick. Uh, this is second reading of the Grable downtown council ordinance number twenty twenty five dash six, an ordinance establishing stop signs for certain road and street intersections. This is the second reading after completion. Do I have a motion to accept second reading?
I'd make a motion, we accept the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty five dash six.
Okay, I will open the ordinance up for any public discussion or comments at this time on the place of those, placement of the additional stop signs. If there is no further discussion, I will do a third reading for final adoption. This is ordinance number twenty twenty five dash six, an ordinance establishing the stop signs for certain road and street intersections. Do I have a motion for the third and final reading?
I'd make a motion, we accept the third and final reading of ordinance number twenty twenty five dash six.
So period, second.
And what else do you have for us, Zach?
That, that's all we have for this evening, Claude.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna sign a couple of these. While he's signing it, Alex, real quick, can you just make a note while I'm on record about checking on the, um, Flags, the gas company, Creators property?
Yep.
They keep going up there every week and putting flags in and spraying yellow paint in the yard. All the way down Illinois. They keep putting flags in.
Done?
Thank you.
Yeah, but Bruce, Bruce keeps calling, Bruce keeps calling it in.
Bruce called it in till they done the first group.
They probably don't need to do.
The, the lady goes and hits resubmit, all, all takes. She's hitting resub, I don't know.
That, that's also the issue, sometimes like they don't tell the office people.
Yeah.
And Brad McStud.
That twenty days is up, that, that office person says, resubmit, we're done, they're all, all in the pen, yeah.
I told her what should be completed, if you want to work them out, but.
Anyone else have anything for the, the council?
You, uh, wanna let us do a Halloween trunk or treat again?
Is that in the church park, uh, the parking lot in the church, the one in the Grable Bank parking lot?
The one that I put together last year, in the First Merchants lot.
And I know we're having a town one this year, and last year's construction kind of sort of ran out of play, but I had a lot of fun down there, I didn't know if we were open to it again or not, or.
Well, the church got one more and not at the same time?
Church got one.
Same as that or not?
Yeah.
I mean, we don't wanna take away from one to go to another one, they don't.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I, I think the, the general. The general reception that I've gotten, obviously since we put it on last year, um, was the Grable community members and even surrounding Grable community members may not be as fortunate as us town folk that have the ability to have kids come door to door, et cetera. Um, and this kind of opens that up. Um, I know, in, speaking with Erd Bridgeway, um, as well as the Lutheran church over on Schwartz and Saint Joe, um, that, this was, this was that avenue for them. Um, and it, I, I don't think it's gonna hinder Grable missionaries, and in fact, I think there was some really great foot traffic, and it was a great way for the town to promote itself, um.
I, I set up at both of them last year for the bank, and GMC blew the, the town out of the water, you're not gonna get around that with their, their congregation, but, um, it kinda like, I don't think.
I mean, they, and I'm not saying that if it wasn't hard work, I mean, me and my husband really put some work into putting games together, you know, um, and just overall trying to make it a good, a good event.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, in, in reference to, at, at least the two, three people that have reached out to me, um, even within the last month, month and a half, um, they're really hoping that we do this again, um.
I'm not opposed to it, but I'll tell you, I heard about it last year from a lot of people who are really disappointed, the people that can't get out, that you were saying, talking about some of the elderly and stuff. They didn't get to see any kids coming knocking on their door trick or treating. The residents didn't get to see, I'll bet you we had five kids.
This, this isn't in Lou Love Town Way, may, maybe, you know.
Right, no.
Same night, allow people to do it.
Right, no, I'm just saying, if it's the same night as regular trick or treat and everything, everybody goes to that, loads up, and then they don't go to homes. They never had anything. Exactly. And, and again, I'm fine with that.
No, I mean, do we, do we have a different day, do we do it on the same day, do we?
Just do, just do it there.
Well. We're gonna do it the same time the City of Fort Wayne does. But we went through this many years ago.
Four hundred kids show up.
We had a different day in the city.
Yes.
You had the old town of Fort Wayne out here, and we don't want that. You do it the same day that you'd have the City of Fort Wayne. Whatever you do, no same day, that's fine.
For the trunk or treat? Is it the same time?
What?
The trunk or treat is at the same time as the city has a trick or treat?
Like six to eight, or whatever the time is, or?
Honestly, we're at the permission phase right, right now, I called Stephanie the other day and said, hey, are we doing this, or, or are we just doing, you know, Town Way? And we don't have an answer.
And last, last I was communicated this, that was supposed to be a one and done, so.
Since we are having town trick or treat, I didn't know.
Trunk or treat that I put together.
But the, uh.
Addition of, but yeah, it would be same night, same time, and, and people from out of town can come in and set up, and you still have to walk around too.
Yeah, missionary churches have it.
And they usually do theirs diff, different than the town one, right?
I think.
Same.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there'd be two truck or treat in Town Way, trick or treat, that'd be busy money.
Woo-hoo.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't care if they do it, it's gotta work, but, yeah.
It didn't cost as much.
No, a lot, I mean, me and my husband literally made everything. I mean, in, in all reality, I mean, the, the, the town was out there giving, giving items, but in all reality, I don't think I spent more than two hundred, max. And, I mean, I still had leftovers, there's still leftover tokens and trinkets upstairs that I could use again for this year, if that's.
I, I'd be implying that missionary church is gonna have a big one, let's not.
Okay. I'm asking permission, so if this is the time for you to say no, no.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Stephanie, what are the streetscapes twenty twenty six?
As I've previously discussed with you gentlemen, um, I've been working with display sales to order us new town banners, um, to give us a new refreshed look through downtown, as well as add additional banners through the main street area as well as downstate. Um, and, in front of you is the preliminary, um, design, as well as the quote with the additional new brackets totaling fifty seven eighty three.
Thirty five banners and twenty brackets?
Cause you, you were saying that you need at least ten, and then to add the additional, I, I put in for that.
That should get us about, right now we got twenty, twenty, about twenty banners up. And as they change bowls up, we need to put them back up, so now that bowl is changed up, we had the extra ten, we can put ten more up out through town. And I'm gonna try and get with, uh, David Miller to see if I can get a lift for a couple of days, cause it's gonna take three or four days to put all this new brackets up and address some of the old, the old stuff, and the new are done too, so. It's sort of looking pretty shaggy, so. I got all new, I got all new twines, early old old barn, we just need extra brackets and the new banners and.
And those'll go on the street side and the.
Those go on the telephone poles.
On the street side?
Yes.
Yeah, these can go on the street sides, on the, as long as they're fourteen feet up.
Yeah, they're way up higher, they're way up higher.
Um, I wanna circle back to the trunk or treat, I just brought up Grable missionaries trunk or, trunk or treat, um, event, and it does show that they have it on Wednesday, October twenty ninth, so it would not interfere with Grable missionaries to have it out that way, but.
When is? The twenty?
The twenty ninth is when Grable missionaries has their trunk or treat event. Wednesday.
Yeah.
It's a Wednesday. And then Halloween's, that Friday.
Hmm. I don't know what you guys think.
I'll leave them same night, I don't think they.
Yeah, down on the same night.
No, you're gonna have it on Halloween, is that what you may have?
Yes.
Make sure you got it the same time that the City of Fort Wayne has there. But we, you know.
That'd be a little bit crazy, having all those continued here.
It was, it was.
They used to come out here by the.
Yeah, I believe it.
Yeah. So, if you have the interview.
Okay.
Can round up people?
No, I think I have a decent enough support system to put it on, at least at home, but with the community members as well, so.
Okay.
We'll go for it.
So, uh, thirty first is a Friday, I might say, put, put that on my calendar.
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. Makes sense.
Was that really dark?
No, it, it stayed pretty light down there.
It, it wasn't bad, yeah. Daily savings, I'm thinking by then, so twelve inch hour, it's, honestly, it'll probably be, well, that's bad.
I was just looking.
It was like eight thirty right now, it was eight thirty.
Otherwise, I'm making moments.
Back to the.
Yeah, sorry, and in, in addition to that, um, I've been searching. I appreciate, and, um, the flowers that Claire put together for us this year. Um, but I'm just trying to go as many avenues and search, search for the best price, period. Um, I was, I reached out to Straightgate Greenhouses in Hicksville, um, they're able to pick up our baskets, deliver them, and then at the end of the year, pick them back up again for repotting. Um, he's quoted me forty to fifty dollars a basket for flowers. In the previous years, both with Brian and Claire, we were spending roughly about fifty-three, fifty-four dollars a basket. Um, in saying this, while I was talking with, um, the owner of Spring Gate, uh, or, sorry, Straightgate, um, we were talking about how the flowers, it's like almost right after the Fourth of July period, they start looking a little raggedy. I, I, it, it doesn't, it had no effect on these ones, the years ones in the past, it, it's just they always start to look, um, dried out and miserable. Uh, and, I, I know a lot of it is up, you know, because of the heat, and.
It's how they do the flowers.
Well, it, in, speaking with that, there is a specific hanging basket that we can purchase that has a self-watering reservoir in the bottom of them, so in the event that we can't get right out there and water them when they need it, they will have a catch basin on the bottom that will water the flowers from the bottom. Uh, this was suggested both by, um, Straightgate as well as Claire. Straightgate, as well as Claire, that did our flowers this year. Um, in, in your packet for, and they gave us a special price for the. The baskets, because we're, I, I would like to reorder all of them. To have these baskets brand new, and all of them have this, this catch basin on them versus having the cocoa mesh. And run into the same issue.
The, the issue was when we first bought the cocoa mesh baskets. They had a pipe end in the bottom. And Brian did away with that, he went to a styrofoam plate. If those plants don't hold water for a couple of hours, they're gonna die off quick. When we had pipe ends in the bottom, those things got to be this big around, you could hardly lift them off the bowl.
Yeah, they don't wanna drown.
And I, I just, the simple trick was just putting a pipe end in the bottom, when we used to do that, the plants were beautiful. And I think Brian just got it cheaper over the years, and. If we got a basket that's got a reservoir, that just helps out tremendously.
And the cocoa mats don't last that long either, so.
And those have to get replaced and everything else, so.
Yes. Yeah, and they don't hold water, you know.
Um, these, these also have an attachment on. The hanger that allows them to swivel, so they're not gonna get hung up in the wind, um, and snap and break, et cetera. Um, and those at a hundred and five baskets, because that's what we have currently. Um, all at sixteen inch, not twelve inch and sixteen inch here, and that was confusing as all, as all came out, when I was hanging those up.
We got two different types of baskets, we got the plastic ones and we got the metal baskets.
These will all be the plastic reservoir moving forward, if this is what they choose to do.
And they won't be the, and they won't be the fiber.
Yes, correct. Um.
Couple extra, even if some of them will be a little brittle over time.
Yeah.
Just industry.
Um.
So, do we reuse the baskets over a year, or would we?
Yes, we would reuse all those baskets, um. Straightgate would pick them up, deliver them to us.
Did they disassemble, or did they just pick them up?
He said that he would prefer them to be emptied. But.
I think not.
I mean. Um, for, for that, they, um, this H two O Labor Saver. Um, out of Sterling Heights quoted us twenty-five, forty-five, forty-six for a hundred and five, hundred and five new hanging baskets. Um, I think just longevity, it's gonna make our, our flowers last longer. Um. And then I, I kinda wanted to touch on the fact that, um. And I didn't know until I started doing a little research, but. July fourth of next year is the two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday of the United States. Um, so I would like to kind of mirror all of our flowers as a patriotic tribute to that. Um, and stick with red, white and blue. Like we have in the past, um.
I think that might stand out when you own it.
But I, I will say that Straightgate did suggest that if we do red, white and blue. We should just do one color per basket. He said typically what happens is one color will suffocate the other ones out. And so you might have a red, white and blue basket, but by the end of the year, it's just red, or it's just white.
I think they can be just a, one color in one basket.
And then, I, I figured we'd alternate every third, um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now you're getting tricky.
Huh?
Now you're getting.
Oh, don't. Don't hurt.
No, I think that was just gonna make it difficult.
She needed one, one color per street, is, would that be?
So how much would like the flowers be, just the flowers?
Yes.
So, he, he was quoting four, forty to fifty bucks, so I mean, if we're going on the high end. Sorry, I didn't.
I'm just trying to get a rough idea, we're gonna have eight thousand dollars in flowers this next year?
So we're gonna. Are we gonna go back to the old flowers, I think they're petunias?
Petunias, yes.
Yeah, yeah, those are more, more like.
Um, flowers themselves is, I mean, it's gonna be about what we paid this year, about that six grand that we already, or have continued to pay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's not.
Plus twenty-five hundred for the new containers.
The new containers, which, I mean, technically speaking, we can pay with riverboat money, because it's, it's a municipal purchase. So, we can always.
Plus you never know if they're gonna live, so it would be covered under riverboat gambling.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's always a gamble, it's always a gamble.
I was about to.
Yeah, it better not.
Do they give you any kind of a warranty on those plastic pots?
Honestly, I, I didn't ask, but that's a great question.
I'd be curious, no, cause two years later, like you were mentioning as far as getting rid of.
So.
Probably gonna get it for three years out of it.
That, that's my wife's expertise.
Yeah.
She owns a house plant store in Fort Wayne, so we have hoards of these plastic pots, and they do, it's two, three years, if you're full sun a hundred percent of the time.
You're gonna get about three years out of it.
You're, you're done, they're gonna crack, gonna drop them, they're gonna get knocked off the pole, and then they've seen other pots that didn't happen.
So, I love it, it's like.
There's something better.
We've had them other ones for years, it's just they don't have the right stuff inside of them.
Yeah.
We've probably had them probably, maybe ten years.
I think the, the appearance of those and the lack of labor is phenomenal.
Try and see. Well, if we could offset the labor a little bit with not having to water maybe as much, I don't know if you're still gonna have to water it.
From what it sounds like, they should be able to just water them once a day. Even if he skipped a couple of days, they're still gonna be fine, because they've got that reservoir catch in the bottom. But, he could probably get by with a, a single day watering. Um, with these baskets.
Do they fertilize at all when they're?
Fertilizer.
For, that's what you're saying, that's specific flower it needs it.
Fertilizer.
Yeah, healthy, healthy notes.
Just do it.
Yeah.
Can we have money to do this?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it'd be worth trying, I think it'd look pretty cool.
I think it would. Yeah.
You good, woman?
No, just give it a shot, yeah.
And then you guys are okay with the banners, the mockup for the banners?
Well, now you.
Now you've got it.
Now everyone's gotta start things, right?
Quick question, if, if they're gonna be picking up those baskets. Are we gonna have them marked that they're our baskets, so they don't swap them out for someone else's next year?
Uh, I mean.
Because if they only have a two to three year life on them, if they're swapping them out with someone else, and we can get some older baskets next year, that can start breaking down.
Or we keep bringing them?
We have a pretty good group of baskets here, though, until you're ready.
No, so, he would pick them up in the fall.
Or what, but they're picking them up.
To get them ready for planting in the spring, so we could have them by the last week of May.
Yep.
Might bring it up and say, no.
How, how can you guarantee that we're gonna get?
You're gonna get the same baskets back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good point.
Yeah. Universal color?
No, that's the other thing, we, we can choose everything from a terracotta color to black pots, um.
What, what, what for a sticker on it?
And I.
What if you put on that logo, you wanna do it on the baskets themselves?
I don't think they, they don't.
No.
I would pick the odd color.
It's gonna be covered with flowers.
Yeah, I, I, I was kinda steering more towards like the terracotta or a dark forest green, just because, again, they're. Gonna be hidden most of the time anyways, but.
Yeah. Green will disappear, white will appear, white and blue with a name.
Better than point. If you go with a lighter color, though, it'll be cooler.
Cooler.
Yeah, the color is cooler.
The, the terracotta is almost just shirt.
Almost, yeah.
Just a fair amount. That's, that's right.
Talk to the manufacturer when you order them, and see what they. Of course, they'll give you a.
Yeah.
Just trying to pull up.
When would you order these?
Hmm?
When would you need them?
I mean, it doesn't have to be today, but I.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, we didn't even agree to do it, we could deal with the color.
Yeah.
If they wanna give us two or three pictures, some colors to look at, just for the sake of it, we can do that.
And I've seen them on the website, but I'm having a hard time.
We don't have a timer color out tonight.
Do you want me to look something? Yeah. I have stacks and stacks of those here, lots in the garage.
Would you have to find your pots this year with a piece of plastic with an X in the middle? So as soon as you ran water, you'd just break your bottle.
And hold water.
What are you doing with the old, uh, cocoa core?
They're in the baskets in your garage.
You gonna chuck them, or?
No, they stay in the baskets.
Assuming we replace them, what are you doing with that?
Uh, I don't know. Are they wire, wired with cocoa core liners?
I was, I said you keep them a couple of years, you see if you like them first.
Yeah, I know, so the. The weekenders come in a variety of different colors. So, I mean. Yeah, that's about what I did, I went, I don't know.
I stay in, like you said, anything dark, it's gonna fade horribly very quickly.
So, I, I mean, we could do that sand color.
Yeah, sand.
That sand color, I think would be.
It's not white, but it'll still keep you out of the whole two.
Lighter color is a good one, but it's something.
So it's sand, lighter color.
Okay. Got what you need, Stephanie? Banners, yes.
Banners, yes? Okay.
You got the money and the budget for it?
And then I guess, um, do I, do I tell Straightgate that we wanna go with that initial quote, and then just. Full steam ahead with that, or?
Yeah, they get them planted and ready and.
I, I like the fact that they're gonna be delivered here, because that was, I mean, that was nonsense, that was absolute nonsense. There was flowers going downstate round one, it was, it was.
Yeah.
We got it, we got it.
We got it done, but. It was a lot.
Have they done municipal projects like this?
Yes. We're not the, we're not the only one that they do, so. I feel like they do, but I could be, I know they do Columbia City. Is that right? I feel like they do Columbia City. Well, they've got like an enclosed trailer, so.
Yeah. Did you get a quote from Yommy by chance?
Sal, were you ordering them?
Yeah, um, did, I guess, did you guys think more about that, or?
We'd like to see it.
I don't, I don't have it, that was something that you guys were going to table and discuss, and decide what. What and if. Um, my office is eligible for a raise, first given. The other municipalities around and.
Well, we looked at the other municipalities around. And what they, the clerk treasurer would be responsible for. What we have here that's responsible for. Um. And at this point, we have, we'd like to instigate a five percent raise, which would be forty-eight, six-twenty-two. Now, I have a question for you on that.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Am I correct that you also get paid for park treasurer? For wastewater treasurer, and for water clerk treasurer?
That, it's. There's only, there's percentages that come out of each of those. There's, and that, that's for you guys, that's for the park board, it's.
Thirty-four, thirty-four, thirty-three, thirty-three.
Yeah, it's. There's percentages for each of those categories that gets funneled into all of our salaries.
Yeah, it, it, our, ours comes off of water, sewer, it all broke down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it, the, the computer system does it for me, I don't, I don't, I don't get to pick and choose which department pays me that, that. That pay period, or.
So where it says water clerk treasurer, that thousand dollars isn't correct? Or would be twelve thousand three hundred per year isn't correct? I guess that's where I would have some problems trying to look through this. And feeling what's justified and what's not.
Well, in. And that, that, that's my fault for not giving a more. The bigger, I guess, broken down one, because it's gonna show you, show what everybody's contributions are through those line items, and I, I can definitely pull that.
Okay.
Cause it, it, how, how this claim voucher is set up is just a summary, so it might just say that it's clerk treasurer's salary.
Yeah.
But this is clerk treasurers, councils, park. Um, and then the.
All of those get a piece of the pot.
Yes.
Out of what you have?
Out of that two thirty-five for park, or a thousand for.
Yeah.
The general, if that makes sense.
Yeah. That helps?
Okay.
Yes. I would say. So yeah, if you could have a better breakdown, that would be helpful. Understand would be the better. And, um. My other comment is, have you sent, or will you be sending a copy of our budget to Baker Tilly for review?
I did not.
Okay, I would appreciate to have a review from Baker Tilly. I know those gals, two gals helped you a lot and gave you good starting things. But neither one of them are CPAs, and I think the CPA should be, um, reviewing our budget. And looking at where our income is, and where our expenses are, and those types of things. And so I would definitely think Baker Tilly in the past has been very good. Um, at giving us comprehensive reports of what we're spending and what we're gaining, and that type of thing. So I would encourage that.
Do you have time?
That only encourage, I'd say, you would.
Is there, is there enough time? Does that have to be posted?
I, I, my, my public hearing's supposed to be denied.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. For opening.
Yeah, final adoption is next.
Yep.
Which is three weeks?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That's why I'm asking him if Baker Tilly's gonna have time to review that, that, that.
Yeah. I mean, with everybody else, I, I.
That was my question.
I can't guarantee that, but.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, I can't speak for everybody else, but I know Woodburn uses her, them, I know.
Well, we're, we're working with Baker Tilly, and we don't go with other towns.
I know. Yeah.
Well, and I understand that, but I.
We use, we use what are, what we've worked with for years, and that's why it should stay.
But Baker Tilly was doing my job for me. I didn't want Baker Tilly to do my job for me, if I wanted somebody to do my job for me. I would continue with that, but when I took over this office, I wanted. To figure out what I was doing wholeheartedly from top, top to bottom, start to finish. And. Suzie.
Right.
And Janet have done a wonderful job. Of teaching me those things that weren't taught. Um, so, again, that's why, that's why I don't use Baker Tilly, I don't rely on Baker Tilly to do my job for me, so.
And. I get that, that you don't want them doing your job.
Right.
But the bottom line is, this council. If we want them to look over some of this stuff, because we have to answer to it. If we decide we want Baker Tilly to look at it, it's nothing against you not being able to do it. It's more about us having a company that we've used longer, and it's nothing personal, we've been using them, utilizing them and trusting them longer. Than individual clerk treasures are being here. And I think it's a bigger comfort zone if we have somebody that we've been used to, doing it for years and years, that know us. To have a look at it too, we're not asking them to redo your budget.
Nope.
We're asking them to review it, they know what we expect, they know everything, what our expectations are. And I think they would catch anything that they would say, she's doing this and what she's doing is right. What you guys have always done, put this in here, and this in here, and this in here, little things that the other girls wouldn't know. That we have done through the years, I think, I think that's what, where you're going with, wanting to have that second review. Just out of safety.
We get a comprehensive financial review from them. That helps us project next year and the next year, two thousand twenty-eight, those kinds of things.
I mean, you're, you're more than welcome to send it to Ross, um, but I'm, I'm confident in what I've provided for you guys.
Good. But sent, I'm glad you're confident, and we are too, it's not that we don't agree, but we, um, we appreciate. sending it to him and having him review it. And I think, are you able to give us a perspective of three years, four years in advance, what we're gonna be doing?
That's not in my wheelhouse.
It is in his.
I, I understand that, but what I'm presenting in front of you tonight is the budget. I'm not presenting a comprehensive plan. I'm not presenting a budget or a, a spending plan. This is strictly just your twenty twenty-six budget.
Okay. So I would give you a little please and break down the total salaries for. Because when I looked at it, the forty-six moves, you know, and then dump it, bump it to forty-eight and plus all the other things that go with it, now I understand that that's not everything that goes to you.
Yes, it is. That's shared across.
Across the board.
Seven, soon to be eight, um.
Okay. Okay.
Salaries.
So we could revise this a touch or something like that, okay? That's much more helpful than, I haven't been around long enough to know all that.
So, again, I, I provide you guys the summary because it's, it's been mentioned before, you guys prefer to have the condensed sum per due versus having a book of the accounts payable register, which I, I'd be more than willing to provide you guys, but.
Okay. Um, as far as salaries, I would also like to see the, uh, president of the, uh, park board receive an increase up to thirteen hundred dollars. And the, uh, members of park board, three percent increase. And we'll take yours under advisement with the council. Okay? Anything else you need to know for that?
Is the council staying the same or is that gonna be revisited when I give the information?
We'll do them all at the same time.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Do you have any questions coming in?
Want me to open discussion of any kind to close?
I've got my vouchers.
Yeah.
My claim vouchers. And then we need to open the floor to public hearings so I can present my budget. Thank you for doing this.
Quotes for, uh, storm drains.
Thanks for.
Yeah.
Thanks, Nick.
Yeah. Storm drains had the courier printing?
Yep.
Due to.
Collapse.
Water lines.
Where is it?
The career building by the telephone pole right there, there's a storm drain right there, and it started collapsing around it, sink, I got a big giant sink over there. So I imagine the catch basin's broken down, the pipe on the outside's broken down, so I'd dig it up and replace it. And, uh, there's four properties behind Claude's house that all hold water position drains back. I got a quote to get that green.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, bold, bold little. And then the other thing is, uh, I give you guys quotes for the South Park, some new quotes for, clean out, hold the asphalt and, uh, hold the sticky grain. So we're from forty to fifty grain. If you write up that asphalt, we'll bring it all back up.
We don't have that budget, do we?
No, I had forty-five.
Forty-five.
Just gotta reappropriate.
So I'll have to re, re additional appropriate, re-advertise, um, and I might have, I mean, we might as well just add it to next year's budget at this point because it's.
Yeah.
Trying, trying to squeeze all this in before.
Yep.
Uh, timeline, I just left the end by not pulling through. Did you look at that down by the post office?
No, um. They, they only build the top of that, they didn't go down or anything, so they just build off the top of it. So I imagine if he's got any bad spots in the driveway, that's gonna break apart really quick. So I, I haven't worked it out, I haven't had time, but, that's why I tried to give you two different companies. I did four, but two other companies didn't even acknowledge me. Brooks didn't acknowledge me, Wayne Asphalt didn't acknowledge me, so.
That's not big enough for them to mobilize.
Well, Brooks is right here on site, I've asked him four times, he's still not giving a quote.
I just went out of town for a year.
Well, I think the price being, uh, is deep for that.
I don't, I don't, I can say two times I haven't been good, but I'm still prescribing a quote.
Um, I do, did want to mention additionally, within the claim vouchers, I did pay a claim, um, to Eagle Ridge Welding, um, and in your guys' stack of papers, um. I included the, I'm sorry.
For the bleachers. For the bleachers?
Yes, I included a notation, um, from the. Yeah, there. Can't find mine to save when I like certain.
Insurance, insurance commissioner.
The insurance commissioner, um, stating that
Yeah.
Amish-based businesses, um, do not, when they present a old order Amish liability aid, that does not qualify as liability insurance, um, and this is the second contractor, uh, that the town has taken on that is Amish-based. And technically speaking, we are not to have working on town equipment and town property. They need to hold actual liability insurance. And I, I understand that it, it might be a cheaper option, um, but this is, I mean, this is from the insurance commissioner, so.
Not their LLC. They probably have the right.
They probably have the right of choice.
Do you have to carry, do you have to carry liability insurance?
Like, like.
Yeah, so.
You have to be, work for the company, yeah, you gotta carry it.
Yeah. Okay.
They carry more of this, huh, most of them, I think someone probably have liability insurance.
A lot, a lot of bigger ones do, but the small, the smaller ones.
The smaller ones only carry old order Amish liability insurance.
Yeah.
Um, and it, it doesn't even qualify as homeowner's insurance, technically speaking. So it's, it's.
Yeah, yeah. And it stays, I mean, it's not great, but yeah.
I, I, I mean, I, I'm all.
Yeah.
Yeah, keep things locally.
But. But, and I mean, at the same time, we, we have Moore's Welding that's just, just a little ways away that would that would gladly take our work as well, so I just.
Who, who's that? Moore's. She's just saying Moore's would, Moore's Welding would be available.
Oh. Instead of Eagle Ridge or.
Who's Eagle Ridge?
Uh, it's, um, Schmucker.
Warren.
Warren. Doesn't that.
I know, that now is a noun. It's off of Antwerp.
Down on Antwerp or just a little bit.
We just, we just can't do a cheap route anymore.
Well, can we just.
What do you do? He picks the benches up.
Sorry, Warren.
The part of.
Bleachers.
The rails are just all rotted ways, we just want to do rails and.
Warren Schmucker with Eagle Ridge Welding.
We could reach out to our Amish vendors and send them letters and letting them know. I mean, it's this time of year, the beginning, you know, starting immediately due to insurance regulations, legal talk, legal talk, that we are going to require an, an approved insurance company or an LLC or some other form other than this insurance. I think before we just say we're gonna use someone else, let's send them an explanation why we owe them that much, I think, to give them an opportunity. If they've done work for us, it's satisfactory, let's let them know what would be required of the town. It's not a guarantee they're gonna do it, but if they want to be on our list of approved contractors, they have to have our approved insurance.
I don't think we got very many, I think we only used one or two this year, just 'cause it was on the ball, so.
Yeah. If they had it and it's quicker for them to get to it when they're approved.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a good idea to have it as an option for them as well. If that's good with you.
Okay.
Pay the bills?
You look them over, Wilmer?
Yep.
I make a motion, pay the bills as presented then. Do I have a second?
Oh, a second?
Carrie. Any other thoughts, comments, questions, opportunities?
Do you wanna sign these before the other stuff you're going into, the budget?
Just sign.
Yep. You should, you throw those at me before I even get one.
I know. Well, I would. There's no other stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Is that one for payroll?
Accounts payable vouchers.
I would say right here.
Oh, gotcha.
Zoom meeting ended and took the video.
I know, it's just.
Stop.
You got anything else?
Just the public hearing? But I can't open that.
Open for a public hearing for budget for two thousand twenty-six?
Um, in front of you, you will see that the general fund has a levy increase of fifty point six eight percent. The motor vehicle highway has an increase of four percent, um, due to the maximum levy. The parks has a decrease, and this is just going off of estimations of what's been provided to me of, um, negative sixty-six point six six percent. Um, across the board, I do show a three percent increase on everything else, minus what we've already allocated.
I got money mixed up in there too, and I couldn't find it.
I have extras, Claude, if you need one.
Well, it's in here somewhere. You want you out, thank you. So this is our income.
What's coming in through the maximum levies and what's being calculated to be spent on.
So how do I read this correctly? This is our estimated budget. Can you have the estimated levy fund?
Yes, that's what they're, they're expecting for the maximum levies coming in. On the left is what
Mm-hmm.
I've appropriated for.
So we're budgeting more than we're coming in?
For the parks board, yeah.
I was looking at the bottom line, correct thing?
Five sixty compared to the five oh two. Never dreamt of that compared to that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. You have a breakdown for us at the second reading?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Pretty good.
Do you have to make a motion on this? It has been ready. On that, do you know? Do I could just make a motion that we accept the first
First reading.
Reading of the twenty twenty-six budget.
That you opened, I mean, that you opened those, yeah.
And we'll open for public discussion. If there's no further discussion, we're gonna table a second reading until the next meeting.
For the fin, or for the adoption meeting on October eighth.
Okay, well then I will make a motion that we accept the first reading of the twenty twenty-six budget as presented, um, on further review. We will, uh, review any changes and additions prior to the adoption at the next meeting. Do I have a second on that?
No.
Second.
Carry. Any other comments, concerns? Okay.
I'm good.
You're good? Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to close the meeting?
Meeting.